Okay, and what would the deadline be for us to turn those in or to get?
March, March.
So you're, we got quite a lot of town meetings in June, okay? So you're July one fiscal year now. Yeah, well, it would be, it would be easier if all the towns had the same fiscal year, so. So that, and so I'm probably here a little early, but a lot of towns here, as you know, have March town meetings and so.
Quick question to be away. Um, you're part of it.
So, so the Belgrade Lakes Association is the Lake Association for obviously Long Pond and Great Pond. Really our work spans the entire watershed, uh, all seven lakes. And so we partner with them. We are not involved in their land preservation. However, we did partner with them on water quality matters and basically.
Okay, because it looks like they're interested in partnering with us. Uh, when we get together on land out. Because the problem with the.
Yeah.
They're sort of the same overall umbrella group, right?
Which other groups? We work together. So, but, um, but can you think of any great guide into the towns? Uh, we will not seek as much as many funds as straight up water supply because we don't have as much shore on it. Uh, in your town as they do. Um, but we deliver, uh, and what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna leave this presentation. Uh, we can go back to that all this week on the team. And we can look at that at your leisure, but it explains a little bit about what we do. Uh, both in the Long Pond and Mesalonse watershed and then you're in Mount Vernon.
Okay.
So, so one other question just about your process. So do you give a particular form for groups to fill out as far as the petition goes?
I'm not sure.
You just pick it up at, uh, well, Heather, right? Yeah, just talk.
So there is a form that the town provides?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you so much for coming down. Congratulations on the grant.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Grab some seats here.
Ordinance review. I knew I was gonna get that wrong. I, I always pay it both ways, so.
Thank you. Oh, okay, yes. Let me do this with them. I'm glad. You guys made a poll.
We did.
Thank you.
I didn't make it.
I wanted a flag for the office.
My son who cannot actively participate because he is the commander of the twenty fifth Marine. Yeah, that's Colonel John Smith, uh, who, as you know, the family is kind of loaded with Marines, so. When you talk about watersheds and stuff like that, we're, we're basically two prals in. So that's Johnny's on leave, hunting deer here.
I heard.
And we're talking about saying the pledge of allegiance to the flag before we begin meetings and things like that. We'd love to see that happen.
Okay.
Okay. I'll leave it to him.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very nice.
Do you wanna do the pledge early?
To the quiet of the United States of America. And to the public which stands, one nation under God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we can go.
Okay, so the governance committee, um, and I think we're all here this evening. Uh, Kathy Jacobs, Aaron Burrows, uh, Barbara Scapa, Annie Wright, and Katie Farren. Uh, we had our first meeting and as the board as well, where you had asked us to convene. And take a look at the, uh, issue of whether Mount Vernon should have a town manager. So we did have our first meeting, I believe it was on November tenth. And, uh, it was pretty unanimous consensus that we thought we needed to have to come back to the board. And talk about, um, the recommendation that the governance committee made. Two years ago when we were convened, I know it's a completely different board now. But, um, we did do a report which I've provided. And we did a bunch of job descriptions, including, um, the job description of a new position. Called, uh, Town Office Coordinator. And we just wondered whether or not that would, was something that you folks had considered, discussed. Whether you thought that would be something that you could do in the interim while we were. Trying to figure, figure out whether the town was ready to go the next step to a town manager and whether or not, what you thought of. The recommendation, because it seemed like it was sort of a transition. Type situation where you could try that and see if that, um. Satisfied the need that, um. Cost you to ask for the, the town manager position to be looked at. So, so that was, that's why we're here. And I would encourage any, um, members of the committee to speak up if, if I missed something. But that was, that was really the reason why we asked for the meeting. Was, there was a lot of work put, put into that report. Uh, it was, it was a different committee. We have some people, um, on the current committee that were part of what we did two years ago. But, you know, we felt that that was, um, that was appropriate at the time. And we never really got any feedback on it. And before we started down the town manager. Option, which is a more drastic step, we just wondered whether this has been considered at least. As an interim measure, measure to see how that went.
Will all of these documents be put on the website so that we can read them and digest what, what all of this information is?
They've all been provided to the board. And they certainly can.
Yeah.
Um, some of, some of the, um, job descriptions, we also did job descriptions for the. Town clerk, tax collector, treasurer. Um, what else did we do? And some of those were actually, uh, approved at town meeting. The town, the town clerk, tax collector job descriptions were actually approved by the town a few years ago. Um, and those are now the official job descriptions. Most positions, so.
I might have to send Carl that email and then he could put it on the website.
Um, yeah, or I could, I mean, I could certainly, I have the ability to put stuff, um, on the governance committee website. But if the board wants to do it, that's.
Town clerk is an elected position.
Town clerk is elected, yes.
So it's not, I mean, it's not, they, they can't, they don't govern there, basically we do as a people.
Right, no, but what I'm saying is that the, the job descriptions for those elected positions.
We've already voted.
We voted on those.
Correct, correct, so it can't be changed, so any suggestion you make would have to go to the town. So by giving them the report and not giving it to the rest of the town is.
That's okay, can we read them anyway?
You, you absolutely, they're public documents, you're absolutely free to read them and I can post them or the board can.
Yeah, but, but, but it's good what you, you came up with, but one of the, like an office. Manager or what you, I'm not sure what you.
Town Office Coordinator.
It's really not going far enough for us. What we're looking for is someone that can, can manage the town. We're not. What's that?
That's yours, that's why we elected you. And if you don't have the time to do it.
No, 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 it's not the time, the time is. Selectmen have only so many things that they, by law can do. We cannot manage employees. That is not, in our bailiwick, we cannot, that's not a selectman's job.
So who's been managing them all, all this time?
You can't manage elected officials, you can't manage. Appointed officials, elected officials can't do.
Who's managing the Megan at the dump? Someone's gotta manage that.
How do you manage?
How, how do, how do you fire your, your help if you can't manage, manage?
Without a town manager, you cannot manage.
Fire someone if you're not managing them.
Directly working for us.
Yeah, so, so, so this is helpful because, um. What I'm hearing you say is that you want someone who would be in a position of. Exercising supervisory responsibility.
Correct.
Over town employees.
Correct.
And that would include, you know, if there was an administrative assistant, somebody who worked at the transfer station. Um, I, I don't know.
I'm talking about.
So.
How this town is being run.
So, so, um, the town office coordinator position, the way we envisioned it. That person would not have been a supervisor, that person would have been the coordinator. In other words, making sure that there was communication between the various.
Right.
Okay, so that's the piece that you feel you need.
Right.
Okay.
Excuse me, may I, I'd like to just. Explain to some people, us, all of us, that when they make the decisions at the select board meeting. But they need the information to do so. And right now there is no information coming forth from anybody that works for the town. You're looking for an office secretary and have it replace Alice. Um, when, if this job, which would be a lot less than what was hundred thousand dollars. Could still help you tremendously to be organized. Um, and to know what was, needed to be done, who could do it, when it can be done, how it could be done and give you the information. Right now, that isn't, there isn't anybody that's doing that. And with, you know, Bob, you and I know, like, I'm emailing you constantly to remind. And that is fine, I'm a citizen and I wanna do that. But if you had, what, what we propose is it might be a good. Way to organize the office and have communication. Within the office about what needs to be done, how it can be done, when it could be done. That the position that she just told you about, that, that we never heard back from. The select board at that time, about what they considered, if that was a good idea or not. So I, I think you, you, it's true that that person will not manage anything. But you guys can manage if you have information.
Well, you, you also have to be careful because remember we meet every other week for two, three hours. We, we can't make decisions other than those nights. Okay, so say something comes up.
Okay, well, let me do an example.
Friday, you can't make.
The DOT project on Matt Dunn's property to protect the fire department, the street, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
That was done in June of twenty twenty one, you signed it, the select board at the time signed the contract and you put it into the budget. But nobody followed through in this town office to make sure that it got done.
Right.
And so we came back in June of twenty twenty two, so that to remind you. And, and you were very, you know, welcomed to us and everything was happy ducked, but it didn't get done still. Now, the reason was not always your fault, someone was the DOT, but sometimes the contract didn't get sent. Or, you know, it was, it was the office details that weren't done well. So if the office, somebody was running the office details, such as the position that we had. Given to the board two years ago, that would not have fallen through the cracks. You guys could have had your two hour, two to three hour meetings on that Monday night. The office coordinator could have told you, you have to do this, this, and this, so forget to do that, and sign this, please, I'll mail it. And it didn't happen.
Right.
And it still hasn't happened. It'll happen in June twenty twenty three, uh, or somewhere, somewhere to twenty twenty three.
And that's what basically a town manager does.
Correct.
Whether the town be very large or tiny.
Right.
Or have a different title.
Yeah, well, right, I keep saying town manager, it can be administrative assistant, it can be. Different, it can be a, a three day a week, you know?
Well, actually, I think we recommend twenty five hours a week.
We did, we recommended twenty five hours a week.
It could be shared.
Yeah, we recommended a pay raise and we recommended that the position be upgraded. New title and more responsibilities.
Benefits.
That's what I'm looking at too, uh, town employees in Melbourne, do not receive any town. Any benefits, right? So it's gonna be, we're lucky we have them, but keeping them going. You know, we gave them two, two dollar raises this year. And that was looking at trying to keep people, um, we've been lucky keeping people, but. It, it's not easy to keep people when you don't have benefits, because all the towns around us have benefits.
Right, but I guess my question is more, um, you could have benefits. Without having a town manager. My, my question is more, do you feel committed to, that's what you need, is a town manager? Because you need someone who's going to essentially supervise employees, that's the one thing I heard. And then the other thing I heard is be able to make decisions in between your meetings.
Yeah, right, grants, there's, there's a lot of things that town manager can do, or it's, you know, the.
Okay.
What, what does supervise employees actually mean? Uh, that's a word we're throwing around and I wanna know, what does that mean? By a mile and.
It could mean that, it also could mean managing them and making sure that they're. Doing what they're supposed to be doing and that all the employees are communicating with each other. And all on the same page and not going off and doing their own thing.
Someone that they can call.
Team, that type of thing.
We only have a few people in the office there, and that shouldn't be a very difficult situation.
Well, we have, we have three people at the transfer station, we have librarians. We've got, uh, Lee and his crew, you know, we, we have.
On a day to day basis, I'm talking about, it's basically.
Yeah.
Parks and.
Right.
I think one of the big jumps is to have a town manager, you ask them, you have to change the charter.
Oh, yeah, you gotta change, yeah.
It, it has to be voted at town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And there's something called in state law, something called a town manager plan.
Yes.
It's right in state statute.
Right.
And the town could adopt that, in which case they don't, you don't have to have a separate charter for it. But if you wanna make deviations from what the state plan says, then you would have to have a charter.
So you have to make sure, because you're, you're shifting some powers from the select board to the town manager. So that's why that, that's a big step.
Yes.
Um, but even with that, in some ways you still need the office coordinator if you want them to do. If you want the town manager to do the writing grants and all that other stuff, you still need an office coordinator. So, it seems like this, this is a good interim step. And maybe that person can become an office man, uh, town manager. But, or maybe they stay as, I, I think it's not a this, then this. I think it's, you need an office coordinator and eventually the town manager.
And I think that governance committee would, would like to know that you, you guys read it. You read the job description.
Oh, yeah.
You studied it. Well, a few years ago, we never heard of it.
So I guess what we're really interested.
We wanna hear what you think.
I've written notes.
Oh, I love it, okay.
So I guess what we're really asking you is, are you willing to do this as an interim step? And if so, I mean, and we thought this would be a great time to do it, because you don't have an assistant right now. So this might be a really good time to, to implement something like this. And if you're willing to, to try to do that now, would you still want us to pursue looking into a town manager position? Even though we have this, we thought maybe we could see how that would go. And we could continue to look into the town manager if that's what you wanted us to do. So we're just looking for guidance from you about what you exactly want our work to do.
I can't go too deep into who we're looking at right now. I have some applications and they would not be in that category.
With this, you would readvertise, showing people that this is much more of a management job than, than, you know. And a combination of supporting you, uh, cleric wise, you know, typing stuff up, including it in the computer and things like that. That's a better job, you still wouldn't be able to give. An office coordinator at this point, you wouldn't be able to give them any decision-making capabilities.
Yeah, I, and the, the final thing, the thing that I wanna say and the, the thing that bothers me the most is this is the third time we've done this. As the governance committee, um, when I first came to town, I have all my folders with me, we did this in two thousand ten and eleven. And we did it a couple of years ago, and now we're thinking about doing it again.
And we did it in the nineteen nineties.
And you did it, okay, so there's even the time before that, so this is not the first time that we've looked at something like this. And, um, we're happy to do it, but, um, you as a select board really have to think about, um. You know, what a presentation of, of maybe obtaining a town manager, how it would affect the town. Money wise, you know, it would be a huge expense and that would be a giant step for this town to take. So a, as we think about this, just, just let me finish, um, as we think about this. And we have to think about, you know, maybe even if you were considering a town manager, would you share it with another town, maybe? Would we start with the administrative assistant who would, who would really be able to run this office? Basically the same way a town manager does. But they are a full fledged administrative assistant as identified by the state statute. So it's not just an administrative assistant like you would see in a business or something like that. So, um, we, we were start, we're starting to feel like that, we've said it to each other, that groundhog will leak, will we keep like going over and over and over? So, so we really need some clear direction from you as to just what you want us to do. And, you know, to be sure, like, they've mentioned too, that you've looked at the work that we presented in the past. And you're a whole new group, so, um, you're not gonna have the, you, you, maybe you didn't see all the people that it was turned.
I would talk to, I would talk to all managers in the area. Wayne has one, that's a smaller town than us. Phat has one, um, probably about the same size as us.
Yeah, whatever, Phat, town manager is also the clerk and the treasurer, there's many jobs in his, in his paycheck, not just.
That's what you should be looking at.
Well, we already have a clerk and stuff, so, you know, that. Okay, I just thought I'd throw that out, it's not just one job for the, and he's great, but he does three jobs in San Diego.
But they could be doing that here too. Could be the role commissioner, could be, you know, is, that's what we, we've gotta look outside the box.
That's all we ask.
So, so I guess going back to the original, the original reason why we came is, um. The town office coordinator. Position is not something that would satisfy the, the needs that you've identified. I guess, is, is that accurate?
Right.
Okay.
Um, can I, uh, maybe the governance committee historical knowledge that. Current board is lacking since it was a different board when you made this report. Do you remember, um, you proposed to increase in hours to the twenty? Um, do you remember how many the assistant was working?
Wow. Yeah, I think it's in the report.
Okay. I think it did say twelve in there, I just wasn't sure, because the hours did go up. So I think just from a. Pre us board perspective, I'm guessing they took some of those recommendations around hours and didn't do a title change. For reasons I do not know, I guess you'd have to.
Twenty five? The current hours for.
I am kind of said that fifteen, twenty.
Fifteen to twenty?
Yep.
Okay, so that's not twenty five.
The administrative system was up to thirty two at the town.
It would have to, it would have to vary between seasons, but, um. One of my requirements too is, uh, they know trio.
Okay, so, um, if we were to come back with a recommendation of town manager. Understanding that that's gonna be a significant, uh, cost. Like, and I think I sent you guys the salary survey from MMA.
Yeah.
We're talking for a full time town manager, something like with wages and benefits, it's probably gonna be here a hundred thousand dollars.
In addition to that, it's gonna be a contract commission. And it typically runs two to three year contracts. So if you are in love with the idea, uh, one year. You can't necessarily fall out of love with it the next year, you have to stay at the cores. And on top of that, you're gonna really saddle people with more taxes. And that's gonna be huge, especially in the recession that we're in right now. Where everything's costing a lot of money. So if you decide you want to pull the trigger on a town manager. You really have to be, put a lot of thought into it. Because I know I don't want to pay more taxes, but there are people who are on social security, fixed incomes. And they're gonna be screaming, and the next thing you know, you're gonna keep raising and raising rates and taxes. And you're gonna put out a lot of people who have historically been in this town. And they're just, it, it wouldn't be fair to people like that.
Um, so the governance committee is wondering, um. If, uh, if number one, if the board feels like a coordinator would be a good fit.
Right.
Number two, maybe if yes or if no. If there's like a further scope of work to consider.
And if the recommendation is town manager with the understanding that. It's a hundred thousand dollars or something in that range. Could be less if you want to part time, but then if you want to part time. You're not dealing with the issue of what happens if something happens when. You guys aren't meeting for two weeks or the town manager, a part time town manager isn't available. So it's gonna be a significant cost. So I'm just, I just kind of want a, some sort of, you know, commitment that. Um, this report isn't gonna end up on the shelf again, like, like it has the last few times.
I don't think it will. Uh, Katie, um, do you know who, uh, did the study for Belgrade? When they looked at town manager?
I don't, that was.
I'll find out, uh, someone did their, um, and he's still in the area, that would be someone that you should talk to.
There, there's actually, um, and I don't know if I shared it with the select board, I shared it with our committee, there was, uh, in Durham. Which is in Anderson County. They recently went through this whole issue of should we have a town manager? And they decided to have one and there was a PowerPoint presentation that I found online and sent it around. I'm happy to share that, wh- which goes through, you know, the process and, and the things that a town manager. Can and can't do, and the different options. So, you know, we, we're ready to go through this, but we just, before, you know, it's, it's going to be a lot of work. And it's gonna be a long process and it may not be something, and I think we talked about this the first time I came. It may not be something that's ready for, for a town meeting. In order to go to a town manager plan, you actually have to vote on it ninety days before your annual town meeting.
Right.
Which, so that would push it back to March. Which, so that would push it back to March and I don't think we're gonna be ready in March.
I figure it'll be a couple of years.
So, yeah.
Good question, if I'm right, what, why doesn't this automatically kind of mean that the assistant, the office assistant, the coordinator position up until that point is something that.
I mean, if we're having trouble now, why aren't we solving the problem right now and getting the administrative stuff fixed up? I mean, it's the former senior vice president of GE credit, I know how this works, but uh you you you. You need to start now and get the office cleaned up, understand what the reporting capabilities are, that should be the. The sum of his job or her job and uh begin to do that now and only then can you make a decision as to what more you need. Um, does that sound unreal or?
Well, we can tackle some, but not.
It's kind of what. Exactly what we said.
It's exactly what you said.
That's what we were saying.
Yeah, you gotta solve the problem.
Yeah, but at nineteen dollars an hour, you're not gonna get. What, what we're looking for.
You might be surprised and and there were a lot of people around who might be interested in doing this kind of a thing, uh.
Staying in the town and.
In a town uh like this, uh, who have a lot of experience and uh. I I think, I think we can't just leap to Superman right away, I think what we need to do obviously is get, get the paperwork and the administrative work. Uh, under control or start to get it under control and only then really make an educated decision about what you need some high buck guy. Fly him in, you know, Washington or something.
You're blowing off the painting, man.
Yeah, I'm kind of very good.
Yeah.
No, I think there, I I really think there are plenty of qualified people around who uh who work very, very hard, uh, that's my opinion.
And where do you advertise?
The best place I got was like a, uh, Mount Blue, um, what is it? I can't remember the name of it now.
Is it the? The Daily Bulldog?
Yeah, Daily Bulldog.
That's the Farmington.
I get the mess, yeah, yeah. I didn't get much out of PJ. Um. Yeah, the other thing is you're talking about a hundred thousand, but that position should be able to bring in money too. So you you're not talking about. You gotta start balancing off things.
Maybe, yeah, I mean grants.
How they bring in money.
Grants.
Well, that's what you're gonna have to look at.
You gotta do grants, you you should hire a grant writer.
Well, that person, the town manager is a grant writer, Katie?
Yeah, a town manager can make that also.
So.
Yes.
And I'm telling you, there's, there's grants out there and.
Oh, I know.
If you're a grant writer, you can get grants.
Specialize in.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So, so, um. You guys, you guys want us to go forward with the town manager? Looking at the town manager and what about the idea of doing, trying a coordinator as an interim? And so we can finish studying it and if the recommendation is yes and it gets approved. At town meeting, that's gonna take, is probably gonna be a year long process.
Oh, at least, yeah.
But you know, the the office coordinator is twenty five hour as opposed to a fifteen hour and that's more attractive to people who wanna work. Um, and you're gonna offer benefits, that's more attractive if people are looking for a job. And so it's already a bigger and better job. And it's two thirds of a job of a town manager.
So you can't do those things yet, we can't offer benefits. We'd have to go to the town meeting before we can even do that. So, you know.
But there are, there are a lot of people who are getting benefits too. Who, uh, you know, there are some disabled veterans around, there are a lot of people who are getting benefits presently. Who might be interested very, very much in twenty five hours, uh.
I mean, if, if you, if you have the money and the budget, you might be able to offer. Some sort of contribution towards a health insurance policy, I don't know.
We don't.
I, I think they're options.
You don't.
We don't have any.
No.
Okay, so it's a bu, it's a money problem then.
That would be.
But it's certainly a money problem, no matter what you do, town manager or this position. So, yeah. Well, it's a money problem until we have a new town meeting.
Right.
To approve money, because we can't expend money until it's approved at the town meeting.
But haven't, hasn't there been some savings from not having anybody in the position or over a long extent?
Yeah.
Or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that would offset, I I don't know.
Possibly. Possible.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I do like the idea of looking at. Really looking at the coordinator job, yeah, you. For the hiring position.
Okay.
Um.
All right.
So you will let us know then exactly what direction you'd like us to go in.
Let you know what.
You, are you gonna, are you, are you for sure wanting us to go in the town manager direction?
Yep.
Is that all three of you, is that? Does everyone agree on the poll?
What about this, what about if you guys study for the option that we gave you for the coordinator? And think about it and then have us come back.
Okay.
After you said, wait a minute, this might be good and everything, or now we want the town manager. So why don't you guys think about it and have us come back?
Okay.
Hour long, you know, two, next, two times, two weeks from now or four weeks from now.
Okay.
When you meet.
Okay.
Or or admin or town administration, I mean, toss the whole.
Yeah, oh, we can go through the, what we have for applications right now and that'll give us a.
But but the applications for now is a lower job.
I know.
So I wouldn't, you know, you said you didn't see anybody that was fifty, fifty, but so you're gonna have to advertise it for a person who would fit this more of a management position. Than typing.
So would you readvertise it as this, as the coordinator or are you gonna continue advertising it as the assistants?
Nineteen dollars now?
I don't know that we can make that decision, I mean, you can't make that, you can't change it, but I just wonder if.
Fifteen to twenty hours.
If you could still advertise it as a town office coordinator and these would be.
Well, at the top.
When, when we studied it two years ago, again, it's before the labor market went the way it is now where you can't. Hire people, um, and wages have gone up so much, but we had recommended, I thought it was eighteen dollars an hour at twenty five hours a week. So it sounded like the salary might need to be up, given everything that's happened with.
But you said you had people apply for the job?
Yes.
They ain't qualified.
This job, the assistant.
And then on false time?
No, they qualify, these are qualified for what, what we want right now. But maybe not for what they are specifying.
Well, a lot of, just to say, a lot of the things that ended up in the job description. Were things that the, a few administrative assistants ago, that person was actually doing. And everybody felt that it was a really good. Um, it worked really well, there was really good communication, people felt like they weren't isolated in. Silos, people were working as a team. All that stuff, um, and we tried to catch that or, um, so.
You'll have to send that to Kyle, I don't know if Kyle has that, my information.
Actually, we actually voted. We could make some changes in that, we didn't vote on the amounts per se, but I have what went into the budget line that was voted on. And we, we voted on a budget line that was based on nineteen dollars an hour, thirty two hours a week.
Thirty two?
Thirty two.
Yes, could, no, well. Some of that was for planning board minutes.
Wow, yeah.
See, I'm not add, I'm not putting in planning board minutes.
Young man, a couple hours a night. Matt, thirty two hours versus, what'd you say was the other one?
Planning board minutes?
Yeah, you said you're not putting into the planning board minute, well, that was a two hour, every two weeks.
Yeah, but there was minutes and prep work.
Oh.
Mailing and stuff.
And then we also have almost, almost six months that we haven't paid, so. For an interim term, we could do some adjustments that be foolish to have it too much. And not be able to continue that next year because it would just be so out of line.
Right.
So, but we do have a little room.
Okay, well, we'll talk and then we'll invite you back.
Well, okay, so we'd be looking for, um, some sort of, I don't know how you wanna say it, but some sort of. Commitment that, that whatever we come up with isn't just gonna go put on the shelf.
Right.
Be put on the shelf and not.
I guarantee it won't be on the shelf.
Thank you.
It's a lot of time being on the shelf.
He said he's getting benefits, so he's looking for the job.
We wanna help you.
No, Aaron Earls used to, we, we used to work uh in the Waterville Town Hall.
Yeah.
You must know some people. You only didn't give it.
We already knew that.
Yeah. I know him really, really well.
Thank you. Thank you, governor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm not. I'm ready to do all this and maybe we all say yes. Yeah, yeah. I appreciate you joining us.
Yeah. Carl needs to catch up.
Yeah, we'll have to send that to Carl so you know.
Okay, um. On a lighter note. Oh, um. Transfer station. We purchased, I purchased the gates and they, um. I'm not sure exactly when they're gonna be put on because of the holiday coming up, but hopefully they'll be up soon.
Do you expect they'll be up this year?
Yes, they should, if not this week, next week. The gates. Um, we're asking people to uh show their pass, their dump pass. Because, um, we feel people are sneaking in. Especially to the shed, recycle shed. So, um, we had one incident last week and uh we had to ask them to leave. So I told Megan to uh write license plate numbers down if she has any trouble. But, uh, they should be looking at passes, we're gonna write it down. I can do that.
Well, what do you, I couldn't hear you, what's agenda item?
Uh, transfer, transfer station.
Oh, people are sneaking into transfer station.
What's that?
People are sneaking into.
Well, yes. Well, we're paying thirty dollars a ton to get rid of all trash if we don't wanna get.
People who don't belong in there.
Right, right, so if they put their pass right on the dashboard, we can see it.
The people in view know intimately have to break their pass.
I don't wanna argue with you. When you go around, I don't think Megan does either.
I promise I won't state the other side.
George's shed. Is not gonna pass the uh, the labor inspection. Um, I can guarantee you, so we're gonna have trouble there and I don't know what to do, I I looked at the sheds at Hammond's and that three thousand bucks. I think the three thousand at Lowe's. So I don't, anybody know where we can buy sheds? Less than three thousand, what's that?
Why do you need to?
You need, well, it'd be nice if it is, George's shed was up close to the trailer. So he's, he's, he's near the trailer and the recycling bin.
Warming shed.
Put it in the middle of the driveway and then they can check. License plates on the way through.
No, 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 because he needs to be close to the shed, uh, the trailer so that he can receive, uh. Uh, TVs and stuff like that, but he also has to control that, um, the recycling trash which fills up. Way too often.
You know, why are you looking at pre-built sheds, don't we have a number of really gifted carpenters in town that could put one together quickly for you?
Cheaper than three thousand bucks?
I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know, I'd, I'd have to call and ask.
Life of lumber.
Just into the town paying three thousand dollars after completion. Yeah, we could get the, you know, this Jason Wheeler, there are all kinds of guys around that I know are really. Very talented carpenters and hell, um, uh, promising something, you know, a smile.
Wait, wait, yeah.
Five hours in the recycle shed, something, yeah. But but I think, I think maybe, maybe we wanna try that, bring us a lot of money.
It is, that's what we paid for the other one.
Yeah.
I think one of the things is that the price of lumber has just gone through the roof.
Well, it has, a lot of these guys too have their own access to work, that they cut work a bit down. At their own.
Are making, have to make stuff for a project for.
Yeah.
A school year.
What do you think?
I think that's a great, Foster Tech in Farmington or Katzy and the guys, so they have building, um.
On site and making a trailer.
We're nonprofit too.
So.
Hairstools, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd say, maybe, maybe it'll be seven thousand dollars or something, I don't know, but, uh. Doesn't it hammer that guarantee us somebody can build one for us now?
Okay, that sounds real good. Okay, um, the North Road drainage, um, I don't know what to say about that. Um, they didn't have the basin. So, I forget it and I haven't heard anything back, I don't know that we can do anything this time of the year. You think there is, I don't think we'll get it.
Probably not, probably best to wait at this time of year, but.
Uh, safety procedures, um. We have done the work with our consultant. With the fire and the rescue, that's done, uh, they've had, they have their book and they've had their training. And uh Lynn has set up the book. And uh, the, the fire and rescue, they had, it was very complicated, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but I think Jason has done a really good job. Um, she is gonna meet with, um, the office staff and the transfer station, um, December twelfth. And at some point, Wendy, we, we need to get with you, maybe. Uh, when she comes up on December twelfth, I'll let you know what time, I think it's gonna be ten o'clock in the morning, but I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay, depends on when in.
Yep, um, basically what they're doing, she's doing is, is she's setting up. Um, safety procedures for each department. And what it is, is to make sure that we follow all the Department of Labor, uh, rules and regulations. And this is completely different than what MMA risk management is. Uh, and basically she comes in and she'll look at, say, this building here. And she'll go shoot through and she'll look at the fire extinguisher, make sure there's three feet on both sides, she'll come in, make sure all the receptacles are covered. She'll make sure that.
And that we're done.
All, yeah. She'll make sure that all the chemicals are labeled for, with the original package label. No, no, uh.
No handwritten labels.
Yeah, no handwritten or no labels on them at all and each. Um, each one of the chemicals have to have a material safety data sheet, all of that stuff. Uh, so she's very thorough and she's doing a good job, I think, um. Anything else on this?
I don't think so. She's doing other one on one day, oh, she did.
She did do the library and that worked out pretty good. I think Alice was a little overwhelmed. So I'll talk with her. The tree, Spring Hill, I I've talked to four contractors and I haven't gotten a bid back yet. I'll keep pushing. Administrative assistants, um we'll go into executive session at the end. And we'll review that, those two that we received. Planning board, um I'd like to write up a a procedure where when we appoint a planning board member that is similar to a select board member when we are elected. We have so many months before uh that we have to take that course and the NA course for public officials. Uh, the uh planning board member or the appeals board member would have to take that class within six months. And then every three years after that. It mostly because the uh applicants are coming in with lawyers now. And um much more complicated uh plans. And I think we just need to keep our planning board members uh up on the latest things.
Yeah.
Um, I would also like to buy an owl like this for them so that they can record their meetings. That way it'd be much easier on them when they're taking the minutes. It'll be all recorded. And I would like to make a motion to purchase a, an owl for the planning board. And to purchase it from contingency funds.
Special, can, yeah, do you have something first?
Can I have a second and then we can?
And then we can discuss.
Yeah.
Also, okay, I'll second. Then I have a question.
Uh, discussion?
When, when we first talked about this, the thing is that we don't have money in the planning board for it, so therefore the contingency. But at the same time, we also talked that it could benefit other places and they are very affordable.
Yeah.
Um, so we've talked about perhaps letting them use this one. Or perhaps having the library buy one, which could also benefit library programs. Alice was having the reading stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I don't.
Can we at least trial a shared?
Do you want to just share this one or do you want?
I think it'd be worth at least seeing if it works for everybody and then before we. Okay.
They're they're expensive enough that how many do we need?
Yeah, um it would take some training for them to use it, yeah. I have no problem with that.
And then if everyone's loving it and, you know, we're using it all the time.
And they can put it in a budget.
Yes.
Nobody, nobody on the planning board has a laptop to this.
We are gonna, we will have one. Yeah, we have an extra.
Gotcha, no one, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, nobody, nobody brings one to the meeting.
No, we, we.
It's gonna need to be supplied.
Yeah, yeah, you will have one.
Gotcha. Good flag.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, no.
Um, I asked to find out why we haven't purchased computers and monitors. Um, because we were supposed to buy one, two, three, at least three computers and two monitors. A monitor here and a monitor for you, right?
I feel like I saw an email thread about that, which now I can't remember when it was.
Yes, I thought Scott was gonna buy this stuff. They got the cameras here.
Well, you had a motion on in a second on the floor.
I retracted it.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't get you.
Uh, thanks. Um So, yeah, I'm gonna call um Scott and find out why we haven't purchased those computers. Find out why. And that would have freed up a computer, one would make the purchase.
And monitor.
And the monitors, yes, because she's using her own monitor right now. Uh, okay, here we go. I talked with Samantha Ruggles at the auditors. Um, has, have they caught, contacted you?
Yeah.
And?
We're, we're scheduled the nineteenth.
Okay, good. Of December. Okay, um the reason I did was I wanted to make sure that we got in their schedule. So we're not gonna be late again this year for doing the audit. And I told her uh it was pretty important as far as I was concerned. The other thing I brought up and Carrie's not gonna like this. Um, I asked them what she thought about the idea that we are using Trio for budget. And we are using another package for uh payroll. And she said that that's not good. And
Did you say another package or?
Two packages.
A company. A payroll service.
Uh, payroll package.
Okay, see, there's a difference. Because they were very much in favor of the payroll package or service, which is what the budget committee approved.
No.
Yes, the budget committee approved payroll service.
Payroll service?
Yes.
Payroll service, you still have to have H-trio.
No. Not true.
There's something.
A payroll service is um like a trio, but only they specialize in payroll and they do all the filings, which is the part of the service part of the portion that Trio does not do. Trio does not make the IRS payments, does not file the nine forty-one reports, does not do the W-two's. They will print the W-two's for you. Uh, but they don't send them.
No.
They don't, they also don't do any verification of them, of the numbers. If you contract a payroll service, they are doing all the filing, they take all the liability, they're filing on a timely manner and for making sure that they're correct. And that's what the budget committee approved. And I wish Katie were still here.
What's that?
I wish Katie were still here.
Oh, yeah, that probably would have been good.
Yeah.
Um, she said that they do Trio. They perform the payroll service and budget service for like three hundred towns. Um, and she doesn't understand why Mount Vernon is having a problem with them doing payroll. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have um someone from Trio, from Harris, zoom in next meeting.
All right, yeah, because I'd like to, because I think we're talking at the snortions, because I had this discussion with them too.
Yeah.
So I wish that we could all talk together on it, because we're getting different.
Answers. Yeah, yeah, that seems good to me. And well, maybe we should just talk to Harris first, but um do you wanna circle back with the auditors about a service versus the or I can email them?
Yes. Uh, yeah. Yeah, I talked to Mike Cohn about a service. And he was not happy about that. He says that services have come a long way um in a much more uh, how do you say it? Maybe you're up on that too. They're they're more reputable than they used to be.
When I think of payroll service, I think ADP and ADP would cut the checks, they would do the filing, et cetera, et cetera. And then when it comes to actually recording transactions, it's actually still going to Trio, it's journal entries to put it in there. So it's me, it's transparent.
Yeah.
Whether, how how it's being handled. To me, it's just one software that's controlling it. You're just saying your gross uh pay is being pushed to ADP. ADP is doing all the filings, as you said.
Yeah, you just do a journal entry. So it's invisible, all the information is in Trio, except you don't have to have all of the personnel information. And if you go to a reputable full service and they're only, actually, there are only two that I would recommend using in the state of Maine, and one is Paychecks.
Right.
Their national one.
Yep.
And the, the other one is Payroll Management.
I haven't heard of payroll management.
Payroll Management is a Maine-based um company, but they are totally bonded. They go through the federal security checks.
Okay.
And they're the only other one in Maine that I would vet. And they, um, they're not as fancy as Payroll Management as far as the user interactions.
Right.
But they're more than what we would need.
Okay.
But you just use, that is the tool and the information is fed into Trio.
Yeah, it's seamless. It's just, it's as if you're preparing your payroll in-house. Um, but you're delegating that responsibility to someone else to actually do all those tasks. And they're responsible for making sure everything's, they'll present, they'll tap into your account to actually draw the money so they could pay like a Medicare, Social Security. What other, what other taxes?
You're saying they don't though?
Yeah, I'm saying they do. Payroll Management does.
We're on the same page, I believe.
Yeah, payroll management does. Trio does not.
Trio is just the bookkeeping shell.
Right.
It's a data warehouse.
Right.
And they they have a payroll portion of the software, but it, they don't do any of the actual filings.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a separate, Trio has modules, like you have fixed asset module, you have the checkbook for like the description, um a general ledger package, um not package, a general ledger module, payroll module, all those flows. So when you wanna pull reports, you get all the information that you need. So I think it's, it's uh the issue is trying to describe what Trio can and cannot do. So it's not really a separate package per se. It's just a module, uh one module of many other modules.
Does Waterville, does Waterville use Trio?
No, they use that in US.
Okay.
And it's, it's similar. Yeah, it's a similar situation. Now, Munis is, it's very expensive and it's on my, my experience, it's people who could afford the more expensive packages will go with Munis. Trio is meant for the smaller.
Small town.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, similar at work, we, well, we use paycheck, but paychecks run that, then we use quickbooks, so they just separate it as a.
You're responsible for all the information that it has. But if we went with payroll management or paychecks, we would still be in control of what people are being paid and how they're being paid. But all of the filing for federal and state taxes they are totally liable for. And if it's filed late, they pay the fines. They have twenty-four seven filings and I can get out of this meeting, just push the button and all of this taxes are taken care of and out of out of our liability. We're not responsible for them at all, because that's the contract with the payroll service.
So Waterville does payroll in-house on a weekly basis. And they, uh, everything's done through a payroll module. On, and I'm assuming that's the same way it's here in Wat-, uh, Mount Vernon, it's in-house?
Right now, it's, it's in-house because I read it's waiting till the end of year and then to contract advantage.
Yeah.
Payroll, and now I'm being told, no.
So far. Not yet. Okay, I'll have, uh.
And I can't see a auditor having an issue with a payroll service.
That's why I'm freaking out because I talked to, I talked to them about that.
I think it's just uh communication between what you're conveying and what you're.
That, that's what I actually took you and sat you down and showed you. The online, you know, how you do it. And it's it's the same as using payroll management's module. You're using paychecks module. The only different, the biggest difference is that A, their software is much better to to use that as far as a tool. But the biggest difference is they then assume all of the liability. Which is where a small, Waterville, I'm assuming, would have multiple employees who are responsible for doing payroll. So if one gets a migraine and goes out or breaks a femur or whatever, the, the, the payroll taxes would still happen.
Yeah.
Small towns who don't. And that's been a big, we have paid thousands of dollars in the past twenty years that I've seen for payroll fines.
I would also recommend going through Trio. Um, my experience with Munis, you purchase modules. And it happens when you're sold the initial package. So you may intend to have a package, a particular module for that package, but you'll end up using it. But through licensing, you're still paying for it. I also, as part of um our task for the governance, to take a look at what actually is being used, so you could find who, when you get to that person, so you could do a lot of cleanup beforehand. And then you just say, well, I'm not using X module, um not using anymore, take off our, our list for our licenses and then give us the prorated amount that we paid for licensing.
Yeah.
That's what we did. And there were certain uh reports and certain report writers that were no longer in existence because other stuff superseded it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you may, I mean, that would be a good cost savings to at least start looking at that.
Yeah, we've only had Trio.
But, but we've used, we've used Trio for real estate and car registrations for thirty years.
Yeah. We did this once recently, yeah.
Okay, that's all I had.
Um, I just had that MMA finally did their ordinance for the G A shift. Um, so I think we should put that on the agenda for next time, because Okay.
Oh, nothing. Oh, nothing?
Heard something.
I guess I'll do it too.
Yeah, four months ago, I submitted a four-year request.
It's here, here. I needed $170.
Oh, I thought it was 250.
Yeah, it came down.
Oh, okay. I'll run and get my check.
Okay.
Okay, 170.
Yeah. Aging in place was going to tell us who, that they recommended a, somebody.
All right. They can't really, they can't actually hire.
No, they were gonna recommend to us and then we would hire.
Yeah. I don't have the information, I mean, I know who it is, I've met them.
I know who it is, but.
Officially presented to you.
Yep.
Maybe next time.
We're done. I can't motion, go, I would have to make motions at the second of the session, but. I think everything is here.
Okay. Make it out to the town?
Town Hall, yeah. If Barry wasn't here, I would have said something else, but.
I'll let him respond. Where's the 21st? Uh, 20, yeah, 21st, yeah. This goes after your last meeting? You may be talking to him.
There may be a minute. Meeting missed. It's on through.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be from June. Through current. What's that?
Whatever, see that.
Oh, thank you, yes, I was gonna have that available.
Already on it.
I'm gonna give you a citation.
I know, then back and forth, I know. I know, you're excellent.
Nice, nice. Basically, step over.
Was darned down.
I just, I know when they'd have mature year at that meeting. On December. Yeah, December 12th. I'll make sure. I know that we go into executive session. And this is one MS MRSA Section 405 6A Personal Matters.
Right, second.
We need to remove the TV.
Good night, everyone watching on the internet. Thank you, Mark.